Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is now six P. M. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov backslash live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter I. D. Eight forty-five seventy-six thirty-two ninety-five thirty hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at city council public comment at madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven. I hereby call this meeting to order. It is now for the time for the roll call. Alicia, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by David Towery from the Chocilla Women's Prison?
It's good to be here tonight. Mayor, thank you. And Protem Mayor, thank you. And all the council members just pray. It's all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, you are you are the God of the city of Madera. You are the God who has created the whole world, and you love us. Thank you for watching over the city and all the people. Thank you for our mayor Santos Garcia and our mayor Protem C. C. Gallegos and all the council members. Give them wisdom, direction, and all the matters on the agenda tonight. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you all please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Artemio Villegas?
Salute our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people that stand together, one message, under God, a message of justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Staff, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Shannon, would you like to make an announcement, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, there are two meetings scheduled for the same time tonight, and of course, the council and the board can't wear two hats at the same time. So what we're going to do out of convenience for the public is to have the city council meeting held first, and then immediately thereafter, we're going to have the housing authority meeting. So if you're here for the housing authority meeting, you are at the right place. Just gonna have to wait a few more minutes as we get through this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. My fellow council members, do you have any additions or changes to the agenda? Then I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Evans, second by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We now move on to public comment. Members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the city council regarding matters on this agenda at the time the agenda item is called. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Item A under Administrator Reports.
Sir, the mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm there was no one from the public that was going to just speak on general issues?
Is there anyone wishing to speak on any other item other than the proclamation? Seeing none, do we have any written or Zoom comments on the anything else, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay. So now we will open up item A one. Proclamation affirming Madera's commitment and support for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of Gaza. I believe you have this item, Alicia.
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Give me one moment while I open. Presentation. Good evening, Mayor and council and members of the public. This evening we are discussing item A one. It's a proclamation affirming Madera's commitment and support for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of Gaza. A little bit of background, council adopted a policy governing ceremonial documents, document guidelines on August second, two thousand twenty-three. This policy establishes the framework for the issuance of proclamations, ensuring a systematic and transparent process. On December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, council approved the two thousand twenty-four list of annual proclamations outlining the scheduled commemorations for the year. The adopted policy allows for proclamations not identified on this list to be considered on a case-by-case basis with a written request required forty-five days before the requested presentation date. On January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Mr. Omer Javed submitted a timely request seeking a proclamation for a peaceful resolution to the Israel Israel-Palestine conflict. At the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, the council by majority vote directed staff to agendize the same item for discussion. And during the regular city council meeting on February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, the council created an ad hoc committee comprised of Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mr. Javed, and a community member to collectively prepare a proclamation calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. The council directed staff to prepare the proclamation for consideration at a special council meeting on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The proclamation being presented reflects the ad hoc committees, the ad hoc committee's direction and the collaborative efforts in preparing the proposed proclamation for council's consideration. If approved, a copy of the proclamation is authorized to be sent by the requesting party to the city councils throughout the San Joaquin Valley and to the other governing bodies as described in its proclamation. Tonight's recommendation is to adopt a minute order approving a proclamation. Excuse me, affirming Madera's commitment and support for an immediate immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of Gaza. That will conclude my presentation this evening, Mayor. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Alicia. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on item A one, the proclamation? Step forward, please.
Give me one moment here.
So, good evening, everybody. First off, I want to start off by thanking all the council members, the mayor, the city staff, everybody who has helped us throughout this whole process. I actually also want to thank some of your guys' spouses because I know you guys are taking time away from them. I also want to thank you for having the opportunity to do us to due diligence and have these types of conversations. We really appreciate our city, our local city and government members. So again, thank you very much. Today, we're gonna make it short and sweet for you guys. You guys are gonna, I don't know who's been watching the news, if anybody of you have heard the story of the girl. Hind, you guys are gonna hear a story of why it's so important of what we're doing today. Also, you will hear an update of some of the numbers, unfortunately, of how many people have died and who is injured. But most importantly, you're gonna hear an appeal for you guys to approve this proclamation today, and so we can set the precedent in other communities. So with that, I'm gonna bring up your first speaker so you guys can hear from her. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, city council members. I stand before you today as a, again, as a representative of a community in mourning. Since last week, there has been over a thousand more Palestinians killed, bringing the number to over twenty-eight thousand. Six children are killed every hour with the current death toll over twelve thousand. There are currently two million Palestinians displaced in Rafa, which is a small part of Gaza and the size of Heathrow Airport. Eleven out of thirty-five hospitals are partially functioning for a population of one point five million people. Doctors are rationing anesthesia for severe surgical cases, and even then, the doctors have said it is not enough with their patients moving intraoperatively from the pain. Not only do the people of Gaza not have access, but there is also a lack of resources. Madera County has a population of a hundred and sixty thousand, and when the hospital closed over one year ago, many of my patients were anxious about their lack of access to their health care. I only share this to highlight universal human experiences. Grief does not discriminate with a mother or father losing their child, whether in Madera or in Gaza. In fact, grief does not discriminate when losing a loved one, whether in Madera or in Palestine. The anxiety and fear that comes with losing access to health care does not discriminate between a resident of Madera or a resident in Gaza. To vote in favor of a permanent ceasefire means to vote in favor of humanity. We are more alike than we are different. It would set a precedent and allow the people of Gaza to get sufficient humanitarian aid. I kindly ask you to support this ceasefire.
Good evening. My name's Lori Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Johanna.
You met Johanna last week when she told you the story of six-year-old Hind. Since we last saw you, the story has a tragic ending. Hind was with her family, seeking shelter, when the vehicle she was traveling in was sprayed with bullets. Alone, terrified and trapped with five dead family members, Hind made a desperate call for help. Two dispatchers stayed on the phone with her for hours trying to console her. Come, take me. Will you come and take me? I'm so scared. Please come. They scrambled to dispatch an ambulance team to find her. The search was hampered by gunfire. As it grew dark, Hind asked for the time. I'm afraid of the dark. Come and get me. The last hours of Hind's life were a horror, which should be incomprehensible in a so-called modern world. After her crushing appeal for help, Hind died alone. The ambulance sent to rescue her was found incinerated, its crew massacred. This is public knowledge, the most well-documented genocide in human history. We are seeing the image of these live massacres live in real time. Hind's story is one of nearly thirteen thousand five hundred children killed. As America was preoccupied with the Super Bowl, Israel brutally attacked Rafa, a location which Israel itself directed thousands toward, only to carpet bomb them. As a result of that bombardment, twelve-year-old Sidra was found hanging from a building with her legs ripped off after an raised Israeli missile threw her body from where she was sheltering. This strategic attack during the Super Bowl is clearly indicative of the U. S. Stake in these crimes. Israel waited for an opportunity where Americans specifically would not be paying attention. Will Israel ever be held accountable for these crimes? Are they above international law? The massacre of civilians, the systemic erasure of a people like any other crimes of this sort, time will condemn in the history books, but by then, it will be too late. Why must we wait for Palestinians to become another quote forgotten tribe? Why must we wait for a future where academics and politicians wax poetic about what could have been? Will the U. S. Be held accountable for funding these atrocities with our American-paid tax dollars? Our government is not only complicit but responsible. Why was the additional fourteen billion dollars approved for military aid?
I want to thank you for your comments. I want to give other people time to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the consideration, and please send the message that Madera stands for peace. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yasser. I was here last week talking to you about approving a resolution. I wanted to share with you something that I haven't shared with anybody. Back in nineteen forty-eight with the massacre in Jaffa, Palestine, which is called Tel Aviv right now, three hundred members of my family immigrated to Gaza. A lot of people immigrated to different places, Jordan, Kuwait, Germany, the United States, Venezuela. But the three hundred people in Gaza, I found out, some of them had been killed. The first one was on October eighth. The last one was a couple of days ago, killed while he was trying to get out of an ambulance, put somebody in the ambulance. It's very tragic, and we need to put an end to it, and I really appreciate you guys voting yes on the proclamation, and thank you for everything you've done.
Are there any further comments? Yes.
Well, good evening. My name is Ahmed Al Hayat, longtime resident of Madera. So just wanted to look around, you know. We live in a world so backwards. If you call for a ceasefire, then you're a terrorist. Okay, I'm just gonna leave it at that. But look around here. These are your neighbors, right? These are your Medarians, your friends, your doctors, your engineers, your lawyers. You have no idea how much we appreciate the recognition that we belong with you and to the human race. Our struggle is not October seventh. A simple book will tell you the story. Just read. Take your ideologies out. Take your hatred, your racism, your you just, just think outside the box and think as a human being, okay? What are we doing here? What is? What's the alternative? What's the status quo? Is it acceptable? You know, everybody has a right to be free. We're lucky to be here, enjoying this pursuit of happiness and this beautiful life. But it should be universal, and especially to the Palestinians. Nobody in history has suffered like the Palestinian people. Nobody. I mean, I, I mean, just read, educate yourselves, get to know what we are all about. Who contributes more as a community to any city or county? We do. We're good providers for our family. You know, and and in our community. So this mutual respect, we really, I really appreciate it. I don't know if, I'm sure everybody does, but thank you, thank you, thank you. And spread the love, I'd say, you know, hate, war, what is that? But everybody have the right to be free. Oppression is not normal. Occupation is not normal. I mean, we grew up oppressed. We grew up as refugees. We're trying to raise our kids to have a better life than us. I know my parents had it worse than me. I'm having good life, and I'd like my kids to have even a better life by being equal and contribute to this community. So thank you very much. This is not a bad thing to say ceasefire now. It's not a bad thing. And doesn't, it doesn't convey the alternate message of hate and you know, the elimination of the other. No, we just want to be equally free. Thank you very much.
Are there any other further public comments?
I just want to remind those that are approaching the public for public comm, I'm sorry, the podium for public comment, please speak directly into the microphones. Our, our cameras are voice sensitive, so they would, they'll pick up whoever's speaking at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. There are some seats right up here in front. Feel free to come up here, right up here to these three seats. This is the people's house. Everyone is welcome here. Okay, please continue.
Hi, good evening, city council members and mayor. I personally felt that I needed to thank you once again. My name is Leila Darwish. I was here on February seventh. I just want to thank, take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you to give us the opportunity to speak about Palestine. I mean, not long ago, saying Palestine was almost taboo and you could easily get fired for it, and now here we are today because of movements like this and people gathering together collectively. We have, are now in here at the city council meeting, speaking before you about something so important for a community here that's been grieving for four long months and seventy-five years. Efforts without others would not have allowed this to come to fruition. And the changes we observe around the world with verbiage and displays like this are assigned to all people fighting for freedom, that we are just as strong as those who are in power to evoke change if we work together. Folks in solidarity with Palestinians are showing up in demonstrations across the world, are pressuring our leaders to hear us and act, if not of human concern, then on recognizing the power that the people hold together. And having that opportunity to speak in important meetings such as this one of the many advantages that we may take for granted in this country. This is a notable accomplishment for Palestinians in this community, but it's not our terminal destination. The ultimate goal is for a permanent ceasefire resolution and for freedom for all people in Palestine and Sudan and people of all human suffering. Thank you once again.
Is there any other further public comment? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments?
Have none, Mayor. We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and discussion. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. First off, I would like to thank the committee that pulled together on to work on this proclamation and to listen to the electeds here that are asking for some changes that were put in place. So I thank you for that. I stand behind you. I understand this is a horrific event that has happened in Gaza, and I look out in the audience, I see my students, I see my colleagues, I see my friends. I see my community. I see members that have called me, have talked to me, spent time with me. I did hear a comment today about mutual respect that we have amongst each other, which is so important. But we're here in the United States of America, and it's very disheartening to see if we're talking mutual respect, that we have some of our audience out here not even standing for our flag salute. So that to me was very, it's very sad because here we are supporting you, here as electors, we want to be on the same line with you and be in step with you. But when I see that, and I heard a lot of the constituents reached out to me from the last meeting and saw that in the audience when they were here that night. So I, I'm here to tell you that I do support you, but in order to get that respect that you're asking mutual respect, I do ask you that if you're ever in our chamber. And it's totally your, your decision. But if you're asking for our support, I'm hoping I'm having, we get your support and that you do stand when we salute our flag. So thank you for that. That's all, Mayor.
Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you so very much, each and every one of you that came here, to my colleagues. I thank you for taking the time. I watched the meeting afterwards, and I do understand, and I understand what each and every one of you are going through. A comment was made that we may not understand. I do understand. I have seen people hanging from trees in Jackson, Mississippi. It's called strange fruit. I have seen my ancestors that were put in the bottom of ships that were brought over here. I do understand. So please, don't ever think that we don't understand. We're all people of color that sit up here, just as you are out there. You are my brothers and sisters. I am in agreements with my colleague here. You want us to support you. This flag that sits behind us, we trust, and God, we trust. We all may call our master something differently, but we still serve the same man. When we close our eyes, we each may believe differently. But when the last trumpet sounds and the dead in Christ rise first, and all that are caught on the ground together will be caught up in the clouds, we will all go to see the same master, no matter what you call him. So just know, we're in agreeance with you. But I would just like for each one of you to stand and stand with us for the flag, because we're here in the United States. And if we're going to fight for each other, we mean, we must fight for the human rights. And I thank you.
Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I'm a, thank you very much. I try to be brief. So I do appreciate the respectful engagement that people had with myself and council. The decisions that we make up here are not always simple, right? So I do appreciate the chance for dialogue that we were given, and I appreciate the people who continue to stay engaged. It's never been my intent to assign blame or anything, just acknowledge the suffering. And so I've said it from the beginning, every time I did engage, I truly wanted to be a partner for peace and unite against violence. And so I hope that moving forward, we, we still can work together on things even locally here, right, with the same passion and conviction that we have here. So I appreciate everybody's engagement, and I think that, you know, this will be a good, good night tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and I just want to thank my colleagues for all of their words. First of all, let me start by saying, Marhaba and Assalamu Alaikum. I want to share my condolences with you and peace beyond to you as well. I'm gonna reiterate what I said last time because I, I stand by that, that the humanitarian crisis in Gaza is difficult to ignore. Through social media and other media platforms, we are witnessing a loss of innocent human life and a destruction within that region. Through social media and other media platforms, we are witnessing a loss of innocent human life and a destruction within that region. We have an obligation to reject hate, antisemitism, and any other channel that devalues human life. As a public official, I feel obligated to speak out for world peace and more importantly, to advocate for peace within our diverse communities here in our city. And with that, I stand for the immediate and permanent ceasefire of all of Gaza. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Villegas?
Ah, yeah, thank you, Mayor Santos Garcia. I just want to welcome everybody to come over here today. I do believe in peace and respect to every human being. So you got my support and everything I can. Thank you.
As mayor of the City of Madeira, I believe our community is a loving community. And we share pain when we encounter pain in the eyes of our people, regardless of where we're from. This resolution was not easy. It was difficult. There was a lot of exterior forces telling us not to go there. But somehow we overcame and here we are today. And so as far as I'm concerned, this matter is done. So therefore, seeing no more comments, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation affirming Madeira's commitment and support for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of Gaza.
I second.
Motion to approve the proclamation by myself, second by Councilwoman Elsa Mejia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilperson Mason?
For the benefit of the public...
I'm gonna ask some folks to come up, residents, would you come up?
Announcement?
Come here.
Yes, and for the benefit of the public, right now, we're going to be doing the actual proclamation. So if the people in front want to sit down, so the people in back can see, it will help everybody be able to see the proclamation actually being done. Thank you so much.
Getting close. Getting close, we're family. I have no idea. Whereas the City of Madeira believes that all life is precious and that we stand united against violence, the City of Madeira advocates for the safety, dignity, freedom, and equality of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality. And 67% of American voters support a permanent ceasefire, according to an October 20th, 2023 data for progress poll, and want to see the U.S. leverage its diplomatic relationships to prevent further violence and civilian deaths. And whereas over 32,000 innocent lives have perished due to this conflict, who have been killed in a matter of weeks, of whom over 60% are children. Gaza is in a dire humanitarian crisis that is getting worse with each passing day, with the only remaining hospitals running out of fuel and medical supplies. And over 2 million Palestinians are facing displacement, homelessness, and starvation. And international organizations like Amnesty International, the United States Nations, the World Health Organization, the U.S. Agency for International Development, the International Rescue Committee, and many others have made a call for permanent ceasefire in order to prevent the further loss of life to civilians and to be in accordance with international humanitarian law. Whereas the City of Madeira recognizes that the current crisis takes place within a long history and affirms that for a pathway to lasting peace and justice to be developed, the root causes of the crisis need to be addressed. And whereas the City of Madeira supports and enjoys other cities in calling on our congress members to demand an immediate permanent ceasefire, release of all hostages due to this conflict, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza, the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and the respect for international law, and calls for a resolution that protects the security of all civilians. And whereas a copy of this proclamation is authorized to be sent throughout city councils in the San Joaquin Valley to the offices of Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria, State Senator Ana Caballero, Representative John Duarte, Governor of California Gavin Newsom, Senator Lofanza Butler, Senator Alex Padilla, President Joe Biden, and Vice President Kamala Harris, urging them to take immediate action to use their positions and influence to end violence. And therefore, be it resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madeira, and on behalf of the entire city council, sign this proclamation on this 14th day of February 2024.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much. You have no idea what this means to all of us. It's the beginning of calling on the whole country. We are American and we are, American people are the kindest, nicest people ever. When there is a disaster in the world, we are the first to go help. This will help us go to the state, to the rest of the states in this country and the federal government to demand a permanent ceasefire. Enough is enough. Thank you so much.
My hair look good.
Everybody, I think we need to go sideways so that we can all fit in the picture, right? Thanks for coming. Okay, okay. We've done this before, so everyone's gonna have to turn sideways for sure.
Sideways.
Sideways. Alright, so which camera are we looking at? Who's going first?
You're looking here. Just keep your pose, because I have another camera here and plenty of...
Right here, right here.
Plenty behind us at one end.
Let him go in the front. Block by the chair.
Okay.
Can you see him?
Yes. Okay, ready, one, two, and three. One, two, three. One more.
So make sure you focus on me.
Ready, one, two, three.
Long live Palestine. Long live Palestine.
Free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
He's so brave.
I don't know why I have that pencil in my hair.
So if we could get with the mayor, add it to the list, he's going to give me the names, contact phone number and email address and I'll send out.
Alright, we're gonna take a five-minute recess so everyone can clear out and then we can resume our next meeting. So if you could all please step outside.
Could we actually adjourn the meeting? And then we'll start the next meeting in five minutes? Would that be okay?
Just adjourn it?
Just adjourn it, yes. Thank you.
Alright. This meeting is now adjourned.